Hello. Are we ready, gang? Okay, yep, he's good. Um, we're gonna get started. It is 5:30 and we wanna stay on schedule the best we can. So it's 5:30. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, board members, you have... Come on, I'm good. Uh, your consent agenda items are in the packet. I think everyone has everything. We would need a motion to approve the February 24th, 24, 2025 regular board meeting agenda as presented. Okay, any conversation? Okay, all in favor, show of hands, please. Thank you. Um, up first, we have our CTE presentation.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. And, uh, thank you for allowing me to give you just a little snapshot and a few highlights about our CTE program. Board members, you have a packet of some slides that I, I asked Summer to print off for you folks. And I have a few talking points that aren't in there that I'm just gonna go through. But, uh, we're pretty excited, uh, as this is CTE month, February, and it's really, really busy for all of us in the CTE world. And we, uh, try very hard to, to make sure that all students get a very well-rounded education in CTE as well as lots of opportunities to become career-ready. And we have a lot to be proud of. I think the board and, and the community can be very proud of all the things that, uh, CTE has to offer as well as, uh, the fact that, uh, as we're looking at the strategic plan, CTE does tickle, uh, check a lot of those boxes when you, when you look at, uh, the 11 CTE programs that we have and the 20 very highly skilled professional staff that go above and beyond to make sure that we mimic what happens in industry. And we have, uh, some of the state-of-the-art equipment and so on that goes with that. During February, uh, CTE month, we've had, uh, the Hinks 5th graders because it's never, never too soon to start thinking about your career pathway. And we also are in the works of planning for Wilson to be able to, uh, provide them with some, some, uh, background and hands-on activities in career readiness. This last week, we had all of the 8th graders, 240 or 50 of them, that came to the big house here to see all of the programs. They had, uh, lunch here and, and so on. So that was, uh, a really, really fun time, uh, on Wednesday last week. Tomorrow is our CTE Expo. Last year, we had over 400 people come with 30 different industry personnel represented to be able to see what we have to offer and what careers they are in northern Michigan for students. And tomorrow, we have 32 that will be here as far as representing industry. And we think that, uh, we're going to have at least the 400 mark again this year. They have an 8th grade parent night, which has been, uh, a real blessing, I think, for us because they'll be coming for that as well. And in this Wildcat Den, we had all of the CTE program, uh, represented last week on Thursday. And hundreds of students came in, had a chance to see and talk to our ambassadors, who are, are, are students that are responsible for representing their program. They're kind of the leaders within their program. And this Friday, uh, we're having our first-ever elected officials and community leaders. There are, I believe, 18 that will be coming to tour our facilities and see what we have to offer here in, in northeast Michigan. And we have Pivot students coming. We also have Atlanta, Alcona, and Hillman students all coming to see our program. So we have, uh, a lot of, a lot of things going on. In April, we have the National Signing Day with ACC. So those students who are in a program that are going to continue their education at ACC, we have a signing ceremony. ACC offers a little, uh, a little reward and a gift to them with some, uh, I guess swag, you would call it, some hats and T-shirts and things like that. And then, of course, in May, we have our CTE Excellence Banquet where we honor the top individuals in each one of the programs. So the rest of the, the handout that you folks have should have some, uh, additional pictures. I just snapped a few for each program and I'll give you a couple of highlights as you look through those. It's kinda hard to do all this with the podium. But the first one is the welding program. And you'll see the CNC program that they're working on there as well as the virtual welders, which are, uh, absolutely wonderful for students, especially when they first start to learn. But they also recently got a cobot robotic welder, which is state-of-the-art for the industry. And there's going to be, uh, approximately 10 students that, at the end of the year, will have completed their AWS certification in welding and will be ready to go right into the workforce if they wish. The second set of pictures is the agri-science pictures. And you'll see Salmon in the Classroom is one of the programs that they participate in. And you'll also see our greenhouse, uh, in the background with the student there. And next week, 14 of their FFA members will be traveling to get their state awards recognition. And the local chapter will be receiving their Superior Chapter Award again this year. And they rank number eight in the state for the Speak Ag Challenge that they participated in. The third set of pictures is Teacher Academy. And you'll see there that they're, uh, preparing some lessons and, and doing some things with their kiosk. The FCCLA, which is their student group, is, uh, in its first official year here at Alpena. And they presently are at the state contest this week. And they have two state officer candidates, which is absolutely amazing. It's wonderful to see how Paula's worked her magic with those students. The fourth set of pictures is marketing. Of course, Campus Closet is, is kind of the pinnacle of the marketing program. The Advanced Marketing School-Based Enterprise, which is Campus Closet, they received a gold recertification status. And the Advanced Marketing VE, which is Virtual Enterprise 45 North, they achieved the gold circles of excellence for both quarters of operation. And both are the highest possible level that they can achieve. Next set of pictures there is the health occupations. You'd see them, uh, working with the anatomage, which is a, uh, kind of a 3D digital, uh, display. And then one of the students, uh, taking, uh, blood pressure in the second picture. And these students now are gonna have the opportunity to obtain their Certified Clinical Medical Assistance Certification this year. And this is going to allow them to gain some differentiated skills to work in a broader variety of medical facilities versus a standard CNA, which we've offered in the past. The sixth set there is the business student. And, uh, these, uh, students here, of course, are working in business and digital media. We had an AHS student that ranked first in the state in Microsoft Excel this year. And he will be competing in Dallas this summer. And then we had two other students that ranked second and third in Microsoft PowerPoint and Microsoft Word. So Amanda Polarski's doing a fine job in the business and digital media area. The next group of pictures will be engineering or robotics. And thus far, students have earned over 25 industry certifications. And the students have completed both years of the program. Will obtain an additional 12 ACC credits upon completion with the aid of our ACC instructor that comes over here every day, Andrew Pad. The next group of pictures would be the automotive, uh, uh, students. And of course, you'll see them working in the shop. The one vehicle that happens to be one of our maintenance vehicles that they're, they're doing a little work on. And thus far this year, they've had approximately 110 vehicle service and maintenance units far. And this includes our CTE fleet of vans that we use, student projects that have brought in, staff vehicles that are brought in, including my own, and most recently, the APS maintenance vehicles that have taken place. And then the last set of pictures, uh, for students and programs is the construction and woodworking. And woodworking is in their fourth year of collaboration with the AMA ESD to provide cupped bookshelves for elementary student reading programs. And in the construction side, the latest tiny house is now complete and will be ready for sale. We have two utilities that they built for the elementary schools so that they can house their snow blower and, and all those sorts of things. And they've completed, uh, mobile deer block and several other projects that they have sold and, and recaptured their, their costs there. And they're planning to do, uh, a few more projects here in the future. So the last couple of sets of pictures for the board are ones that, uh, are some of the projects that we've been working on that I told you about already, and the 5th graders coming over. As you can see, we are alive and well and doing great things. And I think this is a, a great opportunity for us to be able to build a skillset for northeastern Michigan. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for stepping forward and helping out. Okay, we are at our first opportunity for any citizens or delegations who would like to address the board. According to Board Policies 0167 DAT3, public participation at board meetings, individuals addressing the board are asked to state their name, address, and/or your group affiliation. Shall direct all comments to the board, not staff or other participants. Shall not make personal attacks against a school board member or school district employee by name. Shall be limited to three-minute duration. Shall not speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. This portion of the meeting shall be limited to 30 minutes, but the timeframe will be extended if necessary so that no one's rights to address the board will be denied. Thank you, Monica. Uh, do we have access to the timer, Summer?
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to address the board. Uh, first of all, I wanna thank APS... Oh, my name is Bob Case. Uh, I have been at 209 Woodland Drive, Alpena. Uh, I've been a pastor in this area for over 50 years. And I just, uh, want to say, first of all, thank you because I have four children and one grandchild who've had an excellent education at APS. And I now have six grandchildren in the system, so it's very, very important to me. Uh, I'd like to talk about the rain, uh, garden. Uh, I understand that that is being done by a grant and that if we don't use the grant, we lose the money, which seems to me to be not very, uh, sensible. And second of all, uh, stewardship is an important part, land management and the ability to take care of our environment. Uh, and I know that there are students who would love to learn more about gardening and taking care of it. So I think we could have, uh, this is a great opportunity, uh, for some of our students, uh, to get their hands dirty, so to speak, and really get involved, uh, with the earth. And it would be very good for the environment. I know there's some issues about whether this would be wetland. I would ask you to listen to the advice of the experts who said this will not be categorized as wetland. And, uh, just, I think this is a great opportunity for my grandchildren and for other children of the Alpena system and a good thing for our environment. Thank you. And again, I wanna thank you for fine education of, uh, my children and grandchildren.
Thank you. Come on, yep, just keep coming on up if you're ready. Summer's just trying to reset the timer.
Hi, uh, good eve- good evening. Uh, my name is Bob Bruning. I represent the Alpena Hopper Lodge 199. We're, uh, pre and accepted masons. I also represent the Grand Lodge from the state of Michigan. Uh, the past three years, we've been running a Bikes for Books program here for the K-35, which is the 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders. Um, I don't know if you were aware of it or know about it, but it's a reading program that we've had to incentivize the kids to read more. And we hand out a bike package, uh, bike, helmet, locks, uh, certificates with the kids' names on them. We're trying to personalize the bikes, the colors, the sizes, and all that with the kids. Um, the first two years, it went pretty well. We had, uh, a lot of good communication back and forth. Um, this year here, unfortunately, uh, it's like our program is ours in name only because we really haven't had the access to talk to the kids and see, gauge how they're at and see if they're interested in the program still. Because, um, if we don't, uh, if we can't see that, then we may not be able to take and do this program again next year. Now, this year here, we're gonna have 108 bikes handed out in three years for the schools. That's six grade schools, six bikes per school, 36 bikes a year. That's what we've been doing. And so, the Grand Lodge, after talking with them and the lodge, the local lodge, they asked me to come up here and talk to you guys, make you aware of what's going on. And that hopefully, we can stay in partnership with the school system to continue with our Bikes for Books program. Um, we have a lot of media attention. We have social media. This is just, this one here is from like last year. I don't know if you wanna pass it down. That was from last year's Alpena News. And we've, that was, we had one from the year before. And we'll do the same thing again this year to get recognition, not only for the schools but for the kids. And because we started this after the COVID happened and to help bring their, their readings to back up. Because we happen to think reading is the most important that they have. It affects all their other subjects. So with that being said, uh, we just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of it. And maybe we can get a little bit better, uh, insight for the coming year. Because if that doesn't change after this year, then we may not be able to continue it after this year. That's, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I don't wanna rush anybody, but I do wanna honor everyone's time. So we will move, move along to our action items. Um, we have approval of consent agenda items. We would need a motion to approve the January 27th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. January 27th, 2025 closed meeting minutes. February 10th, 2025 workshop meeting minutes. February 10th, 2025 special meeting minutes. Anyone wanna make that motion?
I would offer that motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Monica. Any further conversation on these? None, um, all in favor, show of hands, please. Summer, it's everyone, thank you. Okay, up under our, first, under our additional business requiring board action, we have finalization of the Sex Education Advisory Board.
And just, you're aware, we contacted everyone on this list and they, as of, uh, Friday of last week, they're all able to serve. Um, so if anyone does or is unable to at some point beyond here, we would either have the committee address that or, again, bring that new list in front of the board. But right now, as of, uh, last Friday, everyone has confirmed.
Okay. I can read through all of, say that again?
I was gonna make a motion, but...
Yeah, do me, I'll, I'll read through all of them, just so we have, you have it. Um, so we would need a motion to appoint the following individuals to the Alpena Public Schools Sex Education Advisory Board for the two-year term. Clergy Brian Selmanin, healthcare provider Dr. Leah Conboy, staff member Alicia Lacrosse, student Colin Hainstock, parents Erin Andrews, Bradley Matuzak, Randy Branchow, Elizabeth Kowalski, Danny Frenzoni. I'll make that motion. Monica made a motion.
Second.
Any further conversation? I'd just like to thank all of them for, um, submitting their applications and everyone else who submitted their applications. We had a great turnout, so it's great to see, great pub, great, um, community support on that, so, thank you. Any further conversation? Okay, if not, uh, we'll do a show of hands on this, please. Okay, Summer, uh, please, are you a no?
Yes.
Okay. No, Sarah, of course, is a no, otherwise, all yeses? Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have the second reading of a NEOLDA policy. The following policies are presented for a second reading. Policy 8450 dot 06, COVID-19 vaccination testing and face covering policy. We discussed this at our workshop and we would have a motion to rescind this policy as presented. It's actually timed out through the government. Any, uh, any conversation? If not, a show of hands for this motion, please. Okay, thank you, Summer, that's all six, thank you. Or seven, seven, yeah. That's why I'm a six. Okay, uh, new business. We have human resources, our staff update. For the staff update this week, or this month, we have new hires for professional staff. We have Corinne Donikowski, who's a 5th grade teacher at Besser. Esther Laku, Esther Laku, oh, sorry, at, um, Special Education Teacher at Thunder Bay Junior High. Melissa Ross, a kindergarten teacher at Lincoln Elementary. Shandra Sweet-Hock, at second te- uh, secondary teacher at Thunder Bay Junior High. Jessica Gillard, a CTE director at Alpena High School. Destiny Van Pelt is social studies teacher at Thunder Bay Junior High. And all of them will need approval at the end of this. Support staff, Alexis James is instructional assistant at Lincoln. Stephanie Goldbeck is an instructional assistant at Thunder Bay Junior High. Ashley Scott is a council payable clerk at Central Office. Caitlin Worth, instructional assistant at Hinks Elementary. And Nicole Rings is instructional assistant at Sanborn Elementary. We do have a few resignations. Rachel Bays is 5th grade teacher at Sanborn. Jennifer Weltnar, dispatcher in transportation. Bethany Courter, as Student Information Generalist. Bridget Neff, instructional assistant at Thunder Bay Junior High. Ashley Ryan, instructional assistant at Hinks Elementary. Braylon Dufresne, instructional assistant at Ella White. Alicia Page, office assistant at Ella White. LeAnn Harris, a bus driver in transportation. And Shannon Meeks, instructional coach at Central Office. Two terminations, Chad Salz, mechanic, and Julie Skiba, instructional assistant. And then we have three retirements. And I just wanna say congratulations to all three of them retiring at the end of this year. Maureen Reagan, Title I teacher at Besser with 31 years of experience, of service. Bridy, um, and Bridy, I'm sorry, I always say your name wrong. Hagarot is office assistant at Al- Alpena High School, um, for June 30th, 30 years of service. And Melanie Zalansky, an elementary art teacher, uh, with 29 years of service. So thank you to the three retirees. Big shoes to fill there. Good luck, Romeo. Okay, with that, we would need a motion to approve the hire of the new professional staff.
I move to approve the hire of the professional staff, following all proper requirements.
Any further conversation? All in favor, show of hands? Okay, thank you. Summer has seven there, thank you. Charitable gifts, Dr. Lawson.
Yes. An exciting list, and there's a big one in here. So, uh, Ron Lemke donated shoes and boots valued at $125 for students at Lincoln Elementary. Uh, AAACU Junior Achievement donated a wide variety of school supplies valued at $100 to Ella White. Fitzpatrick Realty gave a monetary donation of $115 towards a packed parent dinner at Lincoln Elementary. Laurie Stefan Realty gave a monetary donation of $70 for library books in support of the students at Besser Elementary. The James A. and Nancy M. Apse Trust donated $95,989.55 towards the purchase of furniture for the Alpena Public Schools District. Ruth Rebo gave a monetary donation of $30 to support the McKinney-Vento Fit Program. Alpine-Alcona Area Credit Union gave a monetary donation of $130 towards scooters for Hinks K-2, uh, K- through 2 students in support of March is Reading Month. Uh, the Alpena High School Robotics Team received donations from Weincoff Plumbing and Heating, $500. Thunder Bay Electric, $200. McDonald Auto Supply, $500. P.I.E.N.G., $1,000. Plowman's Collision, $50. Alpena Power Company, $500. Alpine-Alcona Area Credit Union, $500. Cadrich Family Chiropractic, $100. Marlin and Catherine Weaver, $500. Wolverine State Credit Union, $1,000. Besser Corporation, $1,000. Alpena Agency Incorporated, $250. Holseam, $500. W.G. Benjé, $300. Alpena Buick GMC donated a truck to be used, uh, to transport students to attend two robotics competitions. And that is the list.
I move to accept the donations and write the donors a thank you.
Anything further? All in favor, show of hands, please? Okay, thank you. Okay, we are at our second opportunity for any citizens or delegations who would like to address the board. I'm not seeing anybody, so we'll keep going. Information and proposals, I don't believe we have any letters or communications to share. Uh, superintendent update.
Uh, so I just wanna thank everyone that is here for both the regular meeting but also the strategic plan meeting that's coming up next. Um, and so, uh, just so you know, we had 40 of the attendees from last year out of 54, uh, that are here today or at least said they were here today. So we really appreciate everyone coming back out, uh, to see where we've, where we've been, um, in a year's time. So in the interest of time, uh, I'm gonna leave it at that and I'll talk to you more in just a few minutes here.
Um, information and questions from board members?
Uh, real quick, Hannah, uh, just wanted to get on the next workshop, uh, Policy 1210. Um, the second sentence, there's kinda two different ways to read that. I wanna make sure there's no discrepancy, uh, with, uh, our role as board members and with the MASB.
Okay. Jod it on notes, thank you. Anything further from board members?
On the staff side of things, I really am in a little bit of trouble at transportation now with two people leaving there.
I think we're still okay.
We're still okay, okay.
Um, I was wondering, um, if we could get a little clarification on, um, what is, what really is the problem with this bike program? I, I wasn't entirely clear. Um, is there something that we can do? Um, I, I wasn't really clear on if, if we're aware of the problem and if there's something that can be done to help that along.
Yeah, uh, uh, we, we've been working with them. I think there's two sides to every story, uh, kinda issue. And I'll provide you an update of the details I'm aware of, um, that we've gone to, to partner with this group. We're appreciative of, uh, but there's two sides to every story.
Can you update the entire board then, when you do that, please?
Absolutely, yeah. I, I don't feel it's right to do that in a public forum at this time. If you feel after hearing our side of the story that it is, uh, we could address it at that moment. Don't be...
Anything else? Okay. And if not, you see our advanced planning, just to let everyone else here in the room know, we have a workshop on March 10th at 5:30, which is at the, in our regular boardroom, uh, at Central Office. And then we will have our, um, March regular board meeting at 5:30, uh, also at the board office. And with that, we will adjourn the regular board meeting.
Uh, again, thank you. If you're staying, sticking around for the second part of the, uh, well, the strategic plan, uh, meeting, give us about five minutes. We have a few, uh, technical setups we need to make. Um, but there's coffee there, water there. Um, and then if you are sitting on the side and you weren't assigned a, a table, uh, there are openings at the table. at the tables. You're welcome to come join the tables. What we did was we used last year's table assignments, that's why your name tags were there, if you were here last year, you had a table assignment. And so, just ask the people if anyone's sitting in the empty seats, you're more than welcome to come here. We'll have opportunities to have table discussions going forward, and you can be a part of that if you want to.
So now you're shaking tables, sorry, just jiggling.
I had no idea, I thought about that. I'm like, I don't think I'm supposed to have.
Confidential, at home.
Yeah.
See, I don't know where you had three.
I had three.
Okay, so somewhere else.
Did you go sit somewhere?
Yeah, we gotta sit up with the public.
Oh, this sounds like fun. Like the whole time? Should I take myself?
I'm just taking my pen and my paper. I guess there's paper at the seat, so that's all I'm taking.
Okay. How are you? Live to drink. What? Live to drink. Everyone healthy, finally? I know, I don't like Jesus, but I look right now, personally. You know. I know, even walking in, I was like, I kind of felt them. I was like, oh, please God. I keep saying that, that like something else will happen, so I'll stay healthy somehow. Waiting for the, so, catch ya?
Appreciate that, thank you. Wearing all that great stuff. I have a question for you, and I don't know, maybe I should grab my jacket. Church gave us a whole bunch of jackets, and I have to ask the other one. I'm not sure if it affects me, Summer. I'm ready to be right there. I'm ready. 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 I'm ready.
All right.
Where did Anna go?
Good with that, good with that. I'll give you the high sign. All right. We will come back together. Hello. So, a couple of technical things. We got two cameras there and there that are recording ambiance. The thinking is that when we do an update in the future, instead of talking about what was like, we can take little snippets of video. You'll see we're trying to do a lot of photo evidence and things like that in our presentation today. So, those are capturing video. If you're shouting at this table, it'll probably catch your audio, but that's not the intent. We just wanted to have some video footage of this. This lucky table has so graciously agreed to be recorded. We have the Owl device in the middle of their table that will not only focus in on them far too close with a camera, but also capture the conversation that's going on there. And again, the purpose is just so that when we are talking about this a year from now and two years from now, we can actually see and hear what it was like. And I did say I would approve, and I'm saying it in front of the whole group, if we're gonna use a clip, we will get their permission that this is an appropriate clip, that it has taken off the appropriate number of pounds, and it is the right side of their video, their face, and all of that good stuff. So, no, no video will be put out that will be unflattering, let's say. Other than that, you've got water, you've got coffee, and of course bathrooms, the nearest bathrooms for everyone, which, what's the quickest way? Out that way and then down, and you'll see the bathrooms there. So, this is an official meeting of the board because all the board members are present. So, we'll have Anna open up the board meeting, we'll have a public comment, and then we'll get to the strategic plan, so.
Do you want to once again stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would need one of our board members, please, to make a motion to approve the February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five strategic planning meeting agenda as presented. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Sarah. Sarah, of course, Dana. Any further conversation? If not, all in favor, show of hands, please? Okay, thank you. All right, we are to the meat, strategic planning. But first, actually, it's kind of out of order. We have any citizens or delegations who would like to address the board before we get started? Okay, if not, now we can move on to strategic planning.
And yes, so we, we do have a camera up there as well. We are live streaming the board meeting, and we're live streaming this and recording it as well. So, you're being watched in three different places right now, four for you here. Who has the timer mechanism? Is this it? And who knows how to use it? Can you put twelve and a half minutes on there and don't start it yet? We want to do the best we can to honor your time and keep this as close to two hours as possible, which gives us about twelve and a half minutes on each second section that we're gonna talk about. And just this morning, someone said to me, my section's about forty-five minutes. Will that work? So, we're gonna be moving quickly, again, not to sacrifice content and depth of conversation, those kind of things, but we really want to keep this to two hours. Last time we were together, one year ago, to date, actually, and the Lions had disappointed us that time as well. We had about four hours, five, four, four and a half hours together, so we're cramming it all into a much shorter timeframe here. Oh, boy. All right. So, I am Dave Rabado here, and we won't start the timer for this portion. Dave Rabado, superintendent. Last year, we went through and I introduced every single person. We're gonna go quickly around the tables and introduce yourself and say whether you're here last year or not, just so we can get an idea of that. And then you got about ten seconds to introduce yourself, so what table would like to go first? All right. If you would, because we're recording, just speak into the microphone.
My name is Kyle Kelishewski, I'm the art instructor at Thunder Bay Junior High. I'm returning from the event from last year.
I'm Melissa Smith, I'm the college and career advisor here at the high school, and I was not here last year.
I'm Marie Mizel, I'm an English teacher here at the high school, and I was not here last year.
Brenda Ross, special education teacher at Thunder Bay Junior High, I was not here last year.
I'm James Kelishewski, I'm a social studies teacher here at the high school, I was not here last year.
Jeff Thomas, the social studies teacher here at the high school, and not here last year.
Alana Grolki, science teacher at the high school, not here last.
Romeo Bradaj, principal at the high school, and I was not here last year. Jesse Patterson covered for me.
Hi, Lisa Ray, special ed teacher at the high school, I was also not here.
Sarah Fritz, school board member, I was here last year.
Good evening, I'm Megan Black, principal at Ella White Elementary, and I was also here last year.
Good evening, I am Mike Bookinger, an assistant principal here at Alpena High School. I was not here last year.
Eric Mitchell, I'm the dean of students here at the high school, and I was also not here last year.
I'm Liam Kelishewski, I'm an AHS student here, and I was here last year.
AJ MacArthur, and I wasn't here.
I'm Diane Grandin, I'm the principal at Lincoln, and I was not here last year.
My name is John Capeless, I'm an assistant principal at Alpena High School, and I was here last year, but in a different role.
I am Dan Wakeman, I'm a retired bus driver as of this year, but now I'm substitute teaching, so many of you may have recognized my name. And I assisted Dave a bit here with some of the planning model.
Janice Bobos, retired APS speech therapist.
Marian Bastow, just a citizen, interested.
Corey Newton, principal at Sanborn, and I was not here last year.
Katie Lee, principal at Thunder Bay Junior High, and I was here last year.
Eric Lawson, board member, and I was not here last year.
Hi, everybody, Patrick Carity, Community Foundation for Northeast Michigan, and I was lucky enough to be here last year.
Hi, Christine Shabat, kindergarten teacher at Wilson Elementary, and I was here last year.
Hi, I'm Jenny Polis, secondary instructional coach, I wasn't here last year, but John was me.
I am Lauren Brown, I'm an assistant principal at Thunder Bay Junior High, and I was not here last year.
Good evening, I'm Johnny Marcel, I'm the principal at Wilson, and I was present last year.
Gordon Snow, retired from lots of things with APS over the years, and I was here last year.
And I'm the third Jen at this table, Jen Moyers, I'm the director of the family partnership program, and I was here last year.
Stacy Morris, I'm assistant superintendent of K-12 programs, and I was here last year.
Larry Johns, special education teacher at Piper School, and I was here last year.
Hello, Eric Hansen, board member, and I was here last year.
Jackie Ankoviac, IA at Wilson Elementary, and I was here last year.
Lisa Hilford, retired teacher and principal with APS, and I was here last year.
Stephanie Piper, director of K-5 curriculum, and I was not here last year.
Good evening, Matt Polley, director of 612 curriculum, and I was not here last year.
Hey, good evening, I'm John Shipman, I'm the pastor of St. Paul Lutheran Church, and I was here last year.
Hello, Michelle Ilesley, first grade teacher at Besser School, and I was here last year.
Hello, Brandy Gapsky, I'm an elementary instructional coach at Wilson and Sanborn, and I was not here last year.
Hi, Tom Helberg, retired civil engineer, Michigan Department of Transportation, and I was here last year.
Hi, Carol McKay, retired principal from Sioux-St. Marie, Michigan, and also special education teacher from that area, currently retired, and a grandparent with kids going to school in Alpena.
Hi, I'm Becky Meyer, I'm the assistant principal at Ella White, and I was not here last year.
Hi, I'm Michelle Vivas, executive director of human resources, and I was not here last year.
Hi, Sarah Costain, I'm a board member, and this is a first timer.
John Staley, director of ASIS Academy, and I was not here last year.
Hi, Leigh Fitzpatrick, director of communications for Alpena Public Schools, and I was present last year.
Jessica Harmon, first grade teacher at Besser Elementary, and I was not here last year.
Amy Koprasky, second grade teacher at Besser, and I was not here last year either.
Good evening, Susan Wooden, Alpena resident, and I was here last year.
Mary Lyanna, associate superintendent for business and operations, and I was here last year.
Monica Dzinski, board member, and I was not here last year.
Steph Hitchcock, principal at Hinks Elementary, and I was not here last year.
Good evening, Josh Falpasch, principal at Besser Elementary, I was not here last year.
Good evening, Dustin Bud, county resident, and I was here last year.
I'm Tom Sopp, I'm a retired staff member, and I was not here last year.
Megan Anna Meinhardt, board president, and I was here last year.
Colin Rifford, assistant principal at Thunder Bay Junior High, and I was here last year.
Melanie Samp, instructional assistant at Thunder Bay, and I was here last year.
Kristen Barton, parent of students at Ella White Junior High and High School, and I was here last year.
Hi, I'm Reagan Vogtberg, I'm a reporter from the Alpena news, I was not here last year.
All right. You know how it sounds like a good idea, and then when you see everyone passing the microphone. we do have some hand sanitizer making its way around. Note for next year, you each get your own individual microphones. Just one more time, raise your hand if this is your first time here. Alright. So, thank you so much. We put out a couple of invitations for people to come and be a part of this. That is the main purpose of this process, to have as many people involved in it as possible. You ready? Three minutes. Alright, so, going from 45 minutes to three minutes. Last year, 54 people came together, many of you in the room, 40 of you, representing, as we've heard, multiple organizations, different roles within the district, within the community, and everything. Again, we came together a year ago. This is a little bit small, but the top piece there is the Strategic Plan Summit in February. And you'll recognize those of you that were here, our, oop, well, that doesn't work, but our spreadsheet, our sticky notes that we did. On that day, we came together and identified the strengths and the weaknesses for Alpena Public Schools. And then we put sticky notes on it. We each had three sticky notes, used those three sticky notes to share our priority. And so, overall, we had 76 unique strengths and 80 unique weaknesses identified that day. It broke down, when I went back and tabulated, when we went back and tabulated, staffing issues was the highest dot getter, the highest priority. And if you think back to, you know, what we were experiencing staffing-wise, and you'll see several of these issues last year. I think we're in a better place. However, at that time, staffing was 40, behavior was 27, academics was 24, mental health of staff and students was 19, and then transportation had reached eight dots. So, we took that, those priorities, and then had a board meeting immediately following on February 26th, I think, and then had our March workshop with the board dedicated solely to reviewing those priorities and talking about how we would formulate this plan going forward. And I do want to stop and just acknowledge Dan Wakeman again. He is not just a retired bus driver and a current substitute. He has a career in medical health profession as an administrator. And the board and myself made the decision to design the strategic plan ourselves with Dan's help. We had the option to go out to a couple of organizations that do this and have them work us through the process, but we felt that it was best to generate it locally for us. And Dan has been a tremendous asset to us throughout that whole process. So we took those priorities, talked to the board about it, and then kind of said to the administrative team, "It's your job now to look at these priorities, look at our current 2020 strategic plan. How does it align with that? And look at what you're currently doing in your buildings and how it aligns with that." And if you remember, the strategic plan was developed in May of 2020, and it was adopted, sorry, it was adopted in June of 2020 when the schools were shut down. It was built prior to COVID, and then as we come back to after COVID, we recognized that we needed some updates to the strategic plan. So, the board has had the strategic plan on its agendas 24 times since last year. How is that possible if they only meet once a month? Well, they actually eat twice a month. They meet twice a month, plus we have workshops, so there are some months in there where they had three meetings, but it's been on the agenda as a regular occurring item. Again, we took it to our administrative team and said, "Here's the task. Look at the old plan, look at what you're doing, look at these priorities," and kind of started to formulate the plan. On the administrative team's agendas, it's been there 14 times, again, since February. And then, we started taking this out to the parent advisory committees. I meet with parents as part of my Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee once a month, and so we had this on either updates or their feedback input on nine of those agendas. Board officially adopted the strategic plan, which you should have copies. Summer, we have the copies of the strategic plan for the tables. Are they around? The pillars, is it in there? Okay, does everyone have that? It was in the agenda packet, so if you didn't get an agenda, grab one of those. Sorry. How much time do I have? Yeah, it's right. It doesn't just stop when I stop. So on August of 26th, the board adopted the strategic plan. There's the pillar graphic, essentially through the work with the board and the administrative team and leadership at the buildings, we came up with the pillar idea, and so there's goal areas, with our vision being held up by our goal areas built on our mission, the foundation of the building. And then that colorful piece is the timeline that we're here to share the update with, on you, for you. So, as you look, and I'll go into the definitions and all of that, but we've been in the design phase since the board officially adopted this plan in August. And I'm done. Thanks for coming. It's a joke, my three minutes are up. Here we go for another three minutes. Six, alright. So again, you know, from what the community told us on February 24th, prioritizing, we worked it through conversations with the board, with the administrative team and their leadership teams, to these goal area pillars with the timeline there, and you should each have a copy of that. So we had "Design and Deliver" was the language we chose, and it's color-coded. So, if it's in yellow, it's in the design phase, and if it's in green, it's in the deliver phase. And so, we are, as you see in the document in front of you, we're in the design phase, which is a three-step process. And you're going to be hearing a lot about this in more detail when we talk about each of these areas. But essentially, the design phase is, we are taking a look at everything we do. And again, we have people ready to speak for 45 minutes in each goal area. We have a really hard time boiling down everything it is we do into 12 and a half minutes or whatever it is. But don't think that none of this, you know, as we say, "design", a big part of that is assessing what we have, doing a readiness audit, making sure we're all speaking the same language when we talk about standard assessments. Does everyone have the same interpretation of standard assessments? That's kind of difficult across 604 square miles in all of our buildings, grade levels, teachers. So we're taking that time to really do an inventory, a readiness audit of everything we have, so that then we can start the plan and launch everything in those later phases. So, key pieces define, you're setting standard vocabulary, standard systems, language practices, protocol. We're assessing, conducting a readiness audit of vocabulary systems, language practices. And then we're planning, which kicks in in the second semester, determining measurable goals, deliverables, and timelines for the four steps of the deliver phase, which we'll talk about later. Wow. I think I'm there. There I was. Well, what did I forget to talk about? Anything? I think we're golden. Alright, so that's me. We're gonna, oh, no, sorry, it's not. But I think I get a new 12 and a half minutes. No, do I? Okay, so, "stop talking and get to going" is what you're saying. So this is intended to give you just a snapshot of data. We went into it last year. And, you know, this isn't about an in-depth conversation. We're painting the broad picture of our academic achievement as measured by standardized assessments. And so, NWEA, M-Step, PSAT, SAT, those are our primary standard assessments. So, this is the NWEA gap to norm. In other words, NWEA puts out a number that represents the average fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade students' performance at that time in that subject. So, our, those numbers there are the gap between our average and that norm level. So, when you see that there are a lot of minuses, it means that our students taking NWEA math at this particular point, they were below the national norm for that grade level. So that's kind of like saying, "We're below the state average. We need to get to that norm" to then start seeing students move into those accelerated learning opportunities and those sorts of things. It is a little bit small, but if you would look at the monitor that's closest to you, I want to look at 21, 22, and to the right. And down at the bottom. So when you look down at the bottom, this is an average of all those numbers above. And what you can see there is, from 21, 22, it was minus 30.99. So the average gap between an Alpena student and the national norm for all of those grades, averaging everything out, was 30 points. Now, the good news is, who can tell me what it was in 24, 25? Say it like you mean it. Yeah, minus 22.08. So we've actually reduced that gap overall. Again, painting broad pictures here, every grade level has its own story to tell. But the idea is, when you look at pre-COVID, you're at minus 18.5, COVID minus 19.6, and then returning from COVID, minus 30, a very large jump in the gap between us and the norm. But then it's decreased each year since then, so we're making progress. That's, that's good, but as we dig into the specific levels and all of that, we'll talk about it more. We're not where we need to be in any way, shape, or form. Same thing with reading. Again, you see, it's the same idea. Our students taking those tests, and what was the gap? How far below were they to that norm? And again, you see the same kind of pattern. Pre-COVID, minus 2.5, then to 2.3, so we're actually above it in 1920. And then, .2, and then minus .1, or minus 12.9. And then we've reduced it down to minus 8.85. Again, these are averages of whole groups, you know, so we're not, there's a lot more behind these numbers here. But the overall trend in this is, oh, alright, I need another three minutes, please. Thank you, sir. The overall trend is, we're moving in the right direction. There are many examples where we are, particular grade level, grade subject, buildings, those sorts of things. And then there's lots of examples where we're not heading in the right direction. This is just a long-term view of SAT, those that met all standards for math, reading, writing. The light number, the light line, is the state average, and the dark line is Alpena's average. And so you can see, obviously, when you get to COVID, there's a big drop-off for us. The state's not going to spike the way, because you're talking about a million and a half students, or, well, however many, you know, you're talking hundreds of thousands of students in 11th grade across the state. So you're not going to see as large spikes as you would with a smaller number of students. But, again, we're looking at the trend here, and the trend is downward. And that's the work of the strategic plan to figure out what to do about that downward trend. Just a little bit, because we're going to combine academics and programs and whole child development, two of the columns, two of the goal areas into one. Some interesting information about our economically disadvantaged. If you look at the top row, that's the percent of students that are reported to the state as economically disadvantaged. So it goes from 58.03 in 1819 school year to 65% in the 23, 24 school year. So a significant jump in economically disadvantaged. And of course, you know, when they're economically disadvantaged, it's a good indicator that they're in need of additional supports. Again, not every student, but as a group, you can look at that and say that as that number goes up, the number of supports that you have to provide in the district also need to go up. And then lastly, just looking at our ELL policy, and again, it's a little bit small, so I apologize, but you can see the trends here. That top line is our special ed percentage of total population, dating back to, I think it was like 2006 is the first line there, but 2010 is that first marker. And so you can see, as a percentage of the total students, our special ed population has been increasing from about 2020. And not only is it increasing, but we're also seeing it increasing at lower grade levels. So it's now at its highest point of 14.08% of our entire student body. There were years way back where we had 1,000 more students and more special ed students by just pure count, but they were a smaller percentage of the total enrollment. And our enrollment, as you probably know, has been declining since 1972, so. EL, interesting too, to look at about, so that's English Language Learners. If you look at about 2015, 16, 17, there was a bit of a spike there. Again, that's percentage of the total student body. It then leveled off to 0%, and now it's heading back up with .64%, roughly 23, 24 students in the district right now that receive English Language Learner supports in the district. So, that is it for me. Look at all that time I still have left. So, the format, as you're coming up here, when we get done with these two goal areas, we'll have an opportunity for you to talk at your table. You've got a note card there that's just for you to write your own notes, wonderings, wows and wonderings. You know, if something impressed you, or you've got more questions, please write those on there. We will be collecting those so that we can get some feedback from you that way. But also, when we get done with each of these goal areas, there'll be an opportunity for you to talk at your table about those particular goal areas.
We were the group that's going to be 45 minutes, so, for both goal areas, so. So we're happy to be here tonight to talk with you about the progress we've made this year. And so, just to start, we're just going to give a quick overview of academics and programs and whole child development. So, academics and programs really is, like our slide says, to develop high-quality instruction to maximize student achievement. So in order to do this, we really need to consider the whole child development. So, when we think about the whole child, it's more than the student's cognition and how they're able to learn. We have to think about their physical well-being, their social and emotional well-being, and just all of the dimensions that make us all individual people. And so we keep that lens at all times when we are looking at our academics and programs. Additionally, we do have a number of special populations across our district, so we've talked a little bit about them already. We have our special ed population, our English Language population. We have students who have experienced trauma in their home environment that come to school with special needs. We have students who are economically disadvantaged. We have students who are experiencing homelessness. So all of those things really impact their ability to learn at school. And so, we'll talk a lot about our academics and programs, but just keep in mind, we're always keeping that lens of the whole child development when we're planning.
So, it's hard to talk about what we've done in one year, as far as all things academics, K-12, or now pre-K-12. So, we are going to try to do it in just 12 minutes. But, in March, the rest of our staff, K-5, will be completely trained in teacher clarity. This is the way to break down lesson plans, making sure that teachers are focusing on success criteria, pulling out important pieces out of the content. And our secondary folks did this a few years ago. Our elementary people are finishing that in March. With that goes with identifying how we're going to fund it, which we have done, and then training three of our instructional coaches or staff members to maintain that with teacher turnover, teachers that need more support. We've also, this year, K-5 had a We've also, this year, K-5 had a literacy rollout of Benchmark Advance. This has been a two-year process of piloting that with some staff. This year, it's been a full staff. Along with that, the AMA is supporting us to complete a literacy framework that is making sure that Benchmark is hitting all of the standards, that, you know, we can buy a curriculum, but we need to make sure that it's actually hitting all of the areas that we need to hit. In 612, there has been Savas mathematics, if I'm saying that correctly. I've heard of Savas and Savas. That has also had work in the resource room to make sure that that is restructured at the secondary level. And then we've also just recently started a GSRP preschool program with 16 students at Buster Elementary. You'll hear a little bit about our next steps, but we're in the process of licensing a second room in that building as well. In line with the strategic plan, we have a lot of work being done at the building level. We have a leadership team. And so if you're looking at the original strategic plan or the main document, you'll see standard assessment, standard grading, standard language, standard mapping, and standard pacing. As Dave mentioned, it's hard to evaluate what, what does that mean to everybody? What needs do we have? So the leadership teams identified three areas using, this is just an image of what it looked like, but what were the strengths in their building? What did they feel like was currently in place but needed to be improved? And then what was the greatest need, at least in their opinion? And so the, each building then came together, and the principals compared that to identify across the district, what are we doing really well? What do we need to improve on? And what are we just completely missing right now? Through that work, we decided that we really needed to focus on teacher clarity and that lesson, lesson planning piece for this year.
One of the things that Ron was talking about earlier, CTE, and if you've been to the high school before, if you haven't, I really encourage you to attend tomorrow night. Again, from 5:00 to 7:00, it's a great opportunity to see what's out there. But so much of the curriculum is embedded within what happens there, which also happens for the students throughout the building, really throughout the district, K-12. So when you look at those pieces and you're looking at what can that do and how that intersects with everything, it's not just about the curriculum that's in there, it's also about what we call, again, teacher clarity, the practicums. What do you do with that? How do you do it? How do you teach teachers? How's that work within the classrooms? You'll see, Ron mentioned earlier, the library, the media center, now we know what is Wildcat Den, was set up last week, and it gave students an opportunity to really take that from a hands-on approach and see what, what really works for them? What does click for them? Or maybe something doesn't. Many of you have also seen the big buildings outside, construction tech, or what we know as building trades. Those are opportunities for students to, again, take what they've learned and actually apply that into real life all the time, doing things at the high school level, learning about credits. What does that do? How does that help them to really get them into a place for what they need to do for next year, or for that life moving forward after that? So we hear more about that later on, but again, one more plug, really show up tomorrow night. It's a great opportunity to come in and see the community, as so many of you are involved in, and all of us, but really be a part of what's there.
So just to touch a little bit about our English language population, these are students who are learning English as a second language. And so obviously, they're going to need a lot of support in learning the language, but also that directly impacts their ability to speak, participate in class, develop friendships, learning to read and write, and academics overall. So right now, we have 12 countries and languages represented across our district, which is pretty interesting. And we have one teacher who is providing all of the assessments and the direct instruction to these students. So looking ahead to next year, we're going to be expanding that staffing so that we can increase professional development to our teachers and staff that are working with these kids, so they learn the strategies that they need to know to support these students, and also to increase our direct instruction for those group of kiddos.
So the next steps really in this goal area is for K-5 math, we're going to be looking at a new curriculum potentially. We're, we're just starting the process of putting the committee together to evaluate what we currently have, see if there's something that would better suit our needs moving forward. Benchmark Advance, having any kind of new curriculum rollout is huge. So making sure that our staff are being trained in the digital tools, as well as standard grading and assessment practices, it's, it's a lot to take in. So making sure that they're receiving the coaching and support that they need for consistency. Teacher clarity, I touched on that we have identified and secured funding to have three staff members trained to continue to support that work with new teachers coming in from different, you'll hear a little bit more later in the presentation, but it's not the traditional, just go to school, go to a program, learn how to be a teacher. That's not what is in our classroom right now. So there's a little bit more classroom management, lesson planning support that's needed, and that's a huge piece right now that, we'll touch a little bit more about coaches in a few minutes, but a huge piece that teacher clarity is supporting in as well. And I already talked about the GSRP license, that we are working on a second classroom.
Okay. So, you know, one of the things that we talk about is instructional coaching, and that's, you might not know what that is, but we've had, for those of you that are familiar with the schools, had a large turnover in the past, really about four or five years of staffing. A big piece of that is just because of retirements. One of those key critical components is the coaching staff, the K-12 coaches, instructional coaches, helping build that and support those new staff members, as well as our staff that are already here, and helping them meld together into something they can help build the curriculum from. So Jenny Polley's one of them who's here, we have several others that are here, Brandy's over there. They are really one of those, those backbone that help us move forward with the pieces that are there. And I'd love to tell you more about it, but we're under a time crunch, so keep that one in mind.
Yes, so one of the big things that our K-5 coaches worked on this year is there are standard math and language arts goals for teachers with student achievement. And then in the 612 world, they are working on common and standard assessment and pacing. But then, if you would switch to the next slide, one thing that I asked the coaches if they could help me, just, you know, they have to support new teachers, as we talked about. And I said, can you just make a list of all the things that teachers need to know before they have students come into their classroom? And so this is just things. I had to pick a few because they gave me three pages. So these are just some of the things that they have to know before kids walk in. So the job of coaching is huge, but it's even bigger because they have to teach all these things before they can actually get to the role of coaching.
And new this year, we did add two special education consultants that help assist our general education and special education teachers in implementing the individualized plans of students who have disabilities and IAPs and supporting those complex needs.
So this is kind of where the two pillars blend together. So this is pillar two time, I'm done with pillar one time. So the, there we go. So you're going to hear a lot of talk about MTSS and the different tiers, and it's really difficult to separate pillar one and pillar two, because you really can't consider academics and programs without considering the whole child. They really do go hand in hand with each other. So to try to give, you're going to learn more at future board meetings about the different tiers and how to define that, but tier one is really your curriculum, your whole group instruction, some of your small group instruction. At the, at the elementary level, tier two is going to be like your Title I teachers, your reading corps, your stars, your math corps. And then tier three is your special education services and students who may have a 504
Real quick on one thing, you know, as Dave was talking about the individual pieces as far as where we're struggling, some areas and where we need some growth, I'm going to have Katie Lee, as well as Eric Mitchell, briefly tell a little bit about something that we're, that's really working here, and that's called the PST. Katie?
So the problem-solving team is a team of teachers, principals, specialists from our AMA ESD, our school counselors, a number of people who come together to problem-solve around needs of a student. And so we have processes at the junior high where if a teacher or anyone has concerns about a student, they let us know who that student is, and we connect with the families, and we do a deep dive into the student and figure out how have they done in the past? How are they doing now? And then that team really comes together to problem-solve, what can we do next? What interventions do we have here at the school that can help them? What interventions, working with the family, do they think we might need to add? And so all of that comes together, and we're able to problem-solve individually around that student.
Yeah, and our process is very similar, if not the same. All I'm going to add is, anything, I shouldn't say anything, several things can get you on our list. It could be behaviors, it could be academics, it could be attendance, it could be apathy. So we are trying to, like Katie said, find the right program and the right fit for each
Thank you. And as we're making the transition to something that we call the whole child, I think a good example of this is Aces Academy. Aces really, when you think about what students do and how do they graduate, in this day and age, there's lots of different ways you can do that. And I think the unique thing is, you really want to try to differentiate and find that unique path for the students. One of the things, if you're not familiar with Aces, is they have that ability to not only earn their high school credits, they can also co-enroll with a high school. And again, one of the advantages of having it right here is they can connect with the CTE programs. Also, another strand of that is really how are they getting involved? What are they doing as far as career and college readiness? How are they using their resources here, as well as getting themselves set up for what's next? So that's putting kind of a different twist on things, because ultimately, when you ask a senior, what do they need to graduate? They say 22 credits, but how you get there, everyone has a little different path. And that's where the whole child comes in. You can't just see the students for who they are and what they're doing, saying, hey, this is what it is. It's all about finding the students, getting them the resources they need, and then really taking off the next step from there. That's where we're going to switch over and see what's it like to really expand that and look at the child, not just as an individual student, but also what do they need for those
So when we think about MTSS for our whole child development, you know, we have a really strong foundation with our Positive Behavior Intervention Support System. That's a positive framework that we use to recognize students' achievements, to encourage, you know, repeated good behavior, and we teach them the expectations. We have lesson plans and expectations for both the students and the adults, and it's just a really great evidence-based way to support students in the school-wide building and also in the classroom. And so our teachers all develop a supportive behavior plan at the beginning of the year that integrates that PBIS, you know, structure into how they set up their classroom for the school year. We're also working toward being trauma-informed. We utilize Classroom 180, which is a framework to support a trauma-informed school, K-12. It really focuses on building relationships, understanding what the behavior is telling you when a student who has that kind of background presents with behavior, because you really have to consider that and how you support that behavior, because it is different than some of the traditional challenges that we face in the past. And so most of our school leaders have participated in that training, and as far as next steps go, we'll make sure that our administration that are new to the district get that training, and that we are also recruiting behavior consultants for our district. We did hire one that's here to start in the fall, but our consultants will be able to help our general ed teachers implement specialized plans for their classroom, maybe at the tier two level. At the tier two level, we're looking at specific skills. It's not necessarily individualized per student, but some of our classrooms do need that extra support based on some of the needs that are being presented with, and so our consultants are going to be able to help with that. We're also recruiting what's called an early intervening consultant, who will really focus on that early childhood level, K-1. We know that if we can really focus our attention early on students who are developing their readiness to learn, that that's really going to be setting them up for success as they work their way through our district, as they proceed through all the grade levels. I want to touch on our wonderful school nurse, who is critical to our whole child development. She provides support tier one, two, and three. So she'll give us, as staff, a lot of professional development, universal precautions, she, like first aid, CPR, she'll give some targeted training for, you know, things like diabetes or responding to allergies, seizure activities, and then she takes it even further. And when students have individualized health plan needs, she coordinates that with our healthcare professionals and families, and helps develop those plans and supports our staff in training. Also, with tier two, we do provide a lot of restorative practice, which is an intentional way to teach conflict resolution, relationship building, regulation. Both the secondary buildings have restorative centers that help support that in collaboration with NEMSCA and Behavior Tech and School Success. So we're thankful for those partnerships. Kids also have the ability to participate into some small groups, targeted instruction, and that's something as we move forward next year that we're hoping to expand. So kids might participate in a group that helps them learn how to deal with their anxiety or to develop coping strategies. So while it's not necessarily individualized for each of their need, it's a targeted skill that all those kids need extra support in. And then when we get to the tier two level, I mean, I'm sorry, the tier three level, that's when we're really looking at our students who need that individualized need. And so their plans are developed based on data. All of these tiers and plans we set for students are based on data. But when we look at those individual plans, they're very specific to the student. So one very common one are behavior intervention plans at that point, where we do an assessment and learn more about the behavior and develop a plan. At the tier three level, we might be referring students for Section 504 plans or an IAP evaluation, and all those plans are very individualized and supported. So there are lots of things that we can do to help support students. So I know I only have a couple minutes, and I have a whole lot more I could share, but we'll do that at board meetings, board meetings in the future. But one of the other things we're trying to really streamline is our data collection for whole child development. So at the administrative level, we've had a lot of conversations about how we're documenting within our student information system synergy, making sure that we're consistent across buildings. So we're going to continue that work and have a lot of collaboration and support amongst our group. We are looking to develop some more formal guidelines for progress monitoring for the tier two and tier three level for our students that are participating in those plans. And then with our PBIS, we have what's called a tiered fidelity inventory, which looks at some of the core features of PBIS. And so from that assessment, we're able to refine our practice at the tier one level and set some objectives for ourselves as we move forward. So we did participate in that this school year and are going to be looking to support each other by involving some parents into our discussion, by making sure that we're having appropriate flow charts, and just looking at just strengthening our implementation of PBIS. So that was just a very quick snapshot of everything that we do in pillars one and two. And we look forward to being able to talk more about all the work that we've done and what we plan to do at future board meetings. So thank you for your time.
So you have, at your tables, you have a notes-taking page for individual notes, but then there's also a page that says wows and wonderings. And so we'd like to give you a few minutes at your table to just kind of process and talk about together what you heard. We did combine pillar one and two, because like we said, you really can't separate the two, you can't have one without the other. So at your table, if you could kind of process it, talk about it, and then if you could take notes on one of them to be turned in at the end of the night, so that we can, as a group, then go over those and then respond to that feedback, that would be awesome. We're going to give five-ish, five minutes to do that, so if you would go ahead and do that now.
We have about three minutes on this. Three minutes.
If you don't, don't worry. Kevin said he couldn't figure it out, so I didn't know.
Just about one minute, one minute. I'm gonna go ahead and do my brief. All right. Again, not to rush the conversations, but to keep us on track. If you could wrap up your conversations. Our next goal area is personnel. And if you remember going back to our priorities a year ago, staffing was amongst the highest. And so was mental health of staff and students. And just a little national history. There was what we called in '21, the Great Resignation, where about 25% of the workforce in North America disappeared, resigned, retired, left the workforce completely. We're still dealing with that, not just Alpena, but the state of Michigan and the nation. We have a shortage of workers. Along that, at the same time, again, going through COVID and everything, staff morale was an issue that kept popping up in a variety of ways. And the board administered, directed us to administer the Raymond Employee Engagement Survey a year ago. We're about to administer the follow-up survey to that in the next month or so as well. And we'll be able to have, again, just kind of a measure of staff morale engagements from one year to the next. Mental health, as I mentioned, was a top priority, top, you know, it made its way into the goal area as well. Which also, when you were looking at that Great Resignation, we have more teachers now than we ever have that are coming to us not from traditional teacher programs, they're coming through alternative pathways. And you saw a taste of what it's like to walk into a classroom with everything you have to learn. And many of those things would be covered in traditional teacher programs with all the alternative pathways. It's a wonderful program that we're taking advantage of. However, it shows us the need for a super-strong onboarding and mentoring program. And then, again, just a reminder that mental health of staff was a priority. When we came, when we started the school year in '23, '24, the district recognized it at that point, too. So that's a continuation of it through the Strategic Plan Summit and then made its way into our Personnel Goal. So now, I will turn it over to our HR Director, Michelle. And we do have a 12-minute timer, so.
All right, is this one on? All right. So we have four pillars. In, within the HR personnel sector, we have four different areas that we're gonna be focusing on. And the first one is design and deliver a system of mentoring and support. Design and deliver a system of wellness support, which to me, the first two bullet points tie together. And then it's design and deliver a marketing plan to recruit and retain employees and design and deliver an internal communication plan. For the first one, when we're talking about the Raymond Engagement Survey, this is something that we did last year. We did this at the beginning of the winter '24. And during that time, we asked staff 12 different questions. Of those 12 questions, the growth, the teamwork, the manager support, and their basic needs. And what did they need at those points in time? We then reviewed all that survey data in April of '24. We are due for our next survey round. And then there will be a limited number of questions that people will have to fill out. We'll go over those and then we'll review the results. We wanna see if there's been an increase, see if everyone's feeling about the same, see if anything has changed with what's happening with our staff. Then the next steps will be that we look at onboarding of the staff. And then I'm gonna have Matt move ahead one. All right. And what we're gonna do here is we're gonna talk about onboarding and wellness, work, family, health, finances, all of those things that go into an employee and what they may need. So one of those things is talking about the whole person. We're talking about your life at home and your life here on the job. There are lots of things happening that influence your workplace, whether you're here in the office or you're at home, back and forth. If you have a bad day at work, is it going home? If you have a good day at work, is it going home? What's happening at home and is it coming into work? What are all those things that are taking place? And we need to support the whole person. Then, we're gonna add in some EAP conversations. Right now, part of the staff have EAP, Employee Assistance Program. Part of the staff do not. Is anyone using it? Have we looked at any of that data? And then if so, what is the trends coming back? EAP does not share any data with specifics, like Michelle went for something and this is what they went for. But we can pull some trends to find out, is there a lot of things going on right now with, in regards to finances? Are our staff struggling in the financial? They're looking for legal, they're looking for mental health. What's happening in the world out there with our EAP services? We can also then work through mentoring and coaching. The team prior, they discussed mentoring and coaching. We have a lot of new staff that are coming on board, who are not officially bachelor's degree level staff from the teaching perspective. They have not certified, they have not done student teaching. So we're bringing people into the classrooms that are still in progress in their programs. So not only do they not have all the certifications yet, because they're still working on earning those through various programs that the state has been offering, but it means that our coaches are having more work and they're having to put out more resources. Maybe the principals need help in how to do classroom management. All of those different aspects that are taking place in the classroom where people are going to need more support. One of those things is when we have a new teacher come in, people may not know this, but we are required to assign you a mentor. And right now, we have more people needing mentors than what we do experienced staff. We have done a huge flip with everything that has happened, with all the resignations, retirements, everything that's happened in the teaching industry. So that's one of the things that we have to focus on going forward. And then we also have to coach our staff. And it's not just through the instructional coaches, but it's also everything else that takes place with that person. So between the last slide and this slide, our next steps is to work on an orientation program. One of the things that I've found since being here is that we hire a person and we put them right out into the workforce. So congratulations today, you're a teacher. We hired you, you start, you're an IA, you're a secretary, whatever the case may be. Tomorrow, you go right out and start on the job. So we need to slow that process down, bring them in, coach them a little bit more, talk with them about what they need, where they're at, what type of position they have, which school they're going to, what they might need to know once they get to the school. And then the principals need to have time with them to know what is expected of them on the job and what the emergency procedures are at the school and on the job. So those are some, just some different things, operating procedures, manuals, all of those different types of things. Am I at 60 minutes already? Okay. Okay. I'll slow down a few minutes then. Okay. All right. So handbooks, operating procedures, reference manuals, and then succession planning was one of them that we need to talk about as well. So when somebody transitions and moves up from an IA to a teacher and then a teacher to assistant principal or instructional coach and then further up in the progression, what does that mean for us? And how do we keep people within the district? Our marketing plan for recruiting and retraining employees. I'm gonna give you guys a couple of examples here. I'm new to the area. We also have three other principals that are new to the area. What family ties does any of us have? Probably very little. So if I don't find a friend as a new person joining the district in September, if I don't find a family, a home, or somewhere to stay, what is my likelihood that I'm gonna stay here with the district? It's probably not gonna happen. We need to figure out a way to keep those people here and that we get everyone that is going back to college, back to here. So if you go away to college, how are you coming back? What are we gonna do to keep you here? So there's two different prongs approached that we have to work on on this. The first one is, is making it a family environment so that we know what we are recruiting for Alpena. We know that we're a great community. We know that we have a great place to live. We know that this is an awesome place. But one of the things that we need to do is figure out how to make that feel, more of a family feel, and get everyone involved. One of the things that we talked about in our group session was, being new to the community, I don't know where the local place is for people to go and eat. I don't know where this sinkhole is that everyone is talking about. So that being said, we need to lean on our staff. And maybe this is a survey that we send out that you guys all could fill out and then that would be one of our next steps. Where the current staff, let the new staff know, this is something that we would like to see. This is something you need to do. This is somewhere you need to visit. This is where we all go to get dinner, if you wanna go to a fancy restaurant. This is the fancy one in town within 30 minutes. All of those different types of things. Quit laughing, AJ. I was trying. And then the next thing that we're doing is some advanced hiring. So you saw this month on the board, we had several teachers that were hired. We've already hired five teachers for next year. Because we know that we're gonna have holes. We know that people are filling vacancies as subs right now that are just will-sub-sub employees. Maybe they don't wanna be here. Maybe they're just filling those roles. We need to have the quality teachers hired. And in order to do that, we've gotta get them here first. And then lastly, for our section, for internal communication plan. The internal communication plan, we have a great communication plan for each building. And that is it. There is no way for us to know what is going on in all the different buildings unless I read every single one of those newsletters. So the Aces Connection is up here, the Weekly, the Sanborn, the Buster, Wilson, Examiner, you name it. We've got them all up here. But we have nothing that coordinates us all together so that everyone knows what everyone else is doing. So if there's a pink-out game, maybe I wanna go. I don't know any of that information being from central office. And would anybody at any of the elementary schools know that information? Probably not. So how do we communicate that? We're gonna have to do some newsletters. And our thought process, again, is figuring out, hey, if somebody gets married or has a baby, goes to college, gets a degree, all of those different things, gets a promotion, or even welcoming our new hires. This should all be going into a monthly newsletter for staff. All right. And then ultimately, I think our overall goal for this section is to not only train our staff, but then to also give them the orientation, the tools and the resources and everything that they need to move forward and to be successful in their positions. And then lastly, make sure it's a good family feel. Do you guys have any questions? We're gonna go around the tables at this point and just kinda talk about those different things. Yep. Conversations around the various tables.
So again, we'll take five minutes to do your table conversation. We're just about three minutes, three minutes left. Just about thirty seconds. Michelle, do you still have the clicker? Should we do a photo? Take a little standing up, right? But... Alright, if you would, wrap up your conversations. We are gonna take a quick stretch break, but you have homework during this stretch break. We're gonna try and get a picture instead of at the end. Who would like to stand up? Who would like to stand up? Does anyone need to stand up? Everyone just raise your hands, yes, you need to stand up. Well, no, you were supposed to raise your hand saying, yes, I would like to stand up. We were gonna take a group picture at the end, but I figure this is a good opportunity for us all to stand up. And let's stand in front of the tables here, we'll get a group photo here, if you would. You know, try to organize yourself by height and all of that. So come on in and... Lee, you're gonna take the picture? If, if anyone has knees that still work, maybe we could get some kneeling in the front. Mary, you wanna kneel in the front? I know. Can you, can you get that? Is, this, well, yeah, but all the wires here, I didn't like. I'm guessing that's pretty, yeah, if we can kinda squeeze it in a little bit, I see some people behind the monitors over there. Yeah, if you're able, maybe some front row. How's that looking, Summer? Come on in, group photo. Hold on. Alright, thank you. Alright, our next goal area is family and community partnerships. Alright, on schedule. So our next goal area is family and community partnerships. And the, the idea behind this one is not a new one. It is the fact that the schools cannot do this alone. Again, we recognize this officially starting in twenty-three, twenty-four. I mean, it's just one of those things you understand when you're in education that the partnership between the families and the schools is absolutely critical to everyone's success. But we really needed to kinda state that officially as a district as we were heading towards a new strategic plan. So again, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we started with six priorities. One of them was partnering with parents, because we know how important that is. We expanded it out again. There were comments on the board at the summit last year about partnering with our families and our community. And you heard earlier the number of donations that have come in and do come in every month to this school district. It's just phenomenal. And then we want to just be better at partnering with our families, which happens at that classroom level, at that building level. But then with our community partners that are so incredibly gracious, how do we partner with them in the most efficient, effective way? And then these guys will talk about all of those partnerships and everything, so.
Okay, thank you. This is an area close to my heart. I came from Detroit Public Schools where I did parent engagement. I arrived in Alpena Public Schools as parent engagement. Even the terminology that we use has changed in our education a lifetime. We used to call it parent involvement. And the reason that it became parent engagement is engagement is a partnership of equals. And involvement was trying to get you to bake cookies for a bake sale. And so this is a process that needs to be a true partnership, our community, our families, our students, our staff, in, in order for our kids to do their very best. In a second, I'm gonna have my hardest part of my job, which, if you know Romeo, trying to keep him to twelve minutes on a microphone is near impossible. So I'll try and keep mine relatively brief, but wanna talk a little bit about, first of all, please don't get confused, I'm talking totally different pillars than the pillars we're talking about in the grand scheme of things here. We're on pillar four, and pillar four is to build and strengthen a trusting relationship with our families and our partners. Alright, now I'm gonna talk about some entirely different pillars. This is a research-based method of improving outcomes for kids' education by engaging families. A lady named Joyce Epstein is kinda the godmother of the science behind engaging families, particularly families. We learned earlier that sixty-five percent of our families are at some financial risk, and that comes with certain difficulties. Sometimes it's getting enough food on the table, sometimes it's transportation to events. Sometimes it's finding supplementals that, that can help to enhance your child's education or their general fitness, wellness. Part of our biggest challenge that we always need to focus on is our geography. We're six hundred and some square miles across, and if you are a family in poverty that lives in the far corner of Osneek Township, you've got extremely unique challenges, even above and beyond what folks that might live here in the city have. And so that has to always be in our mind. And so these six balloons in this slide are Joyce Epstein's Six Pillars for Family and Community Engagement. So it's collaboration. We'll talk a little bit more, more about that in a minute. Parenting support, partnerships with groups like Partners in Prevention, some of the community workshops that we promote to our families in order to strengthen them. Many years ago, I explained to the family that I can't fix your child in thirty-five hours a week when you have them at home for a hundred and sixty-eight. Yeah, I think I did my math on that right, but if not, you get the idea. They have more time with the kids than we do, and so if we're not partners, we're a little window in each day, five days a week, a hundred and eighty days a year, and we do not have the ability to overcome what happens outside that window. And so it's really important that we find ways to make our families the strongest they can be, to bring resources for them in the three areas that we're gonna talk about, and to really give them the best opportunity to thrive as families, which gives them an opportunity to learn. And when kids don't get enough sleep, kids don't get enough to eat, kids don't feel safe in their household, then they don't learn during the day. Anybody that's sat in a classroom before has seen that happen. We're living that with a lot of our families, and so that, that goal comes even before education, trying to get kids ready to be educated. And so communicating with our families, helping them know what's available in our community, talking about school issues, teaching them to advocate for themselves. If you don't know, Dr. Rabado has what's called Superintendent PAC, and that's a group of parent leaders from across the district that come in on a monthly basis. And we sit down, we have lunch, and we talk about what's going great at their schools, we talk about what's not going great at their schools, and what we can do to partner together to fix those things. And so helping parents know what their rights are, helping them advocate for themselves and their children is a vital part of this process. If parents don't feel empowered and they feel frustrated and don't understand how the system works, which might have been their experience as they went through school, they may have a very negative outlook on what their school experience was, and that tends to roll right down to the kids if you don't give them the tools that they need in order to change it. Learning at home is many, many things. It's our robotics club, it is our partnerships with NOAA where kids go in and do STEM learning in the summer. It is some of our supplemental academic opportunities like Art in the Loft, you know, all these great programs where kids are, have the opportunity to learn things that we want them to know, but it doesn't feel like school anymore. It's the opportunity just to learn into value learning. And then, of course, volunteering. Utilizing everything that we can, everything that's available in our school district to try and give kids the best opportunity to have a good education and a good family life. And so volunteering by parents, volunteering by community members, the partnerships that we'll talk about with our community organizations, those are really all important aspects of the six pillars of family engagement by Joyce Epstein. So go ahead, Matt. This is just a little visual of each one. So our community collaboration, we just partnered with an organization that brought in dictionaries for all our fifth graders, fourth graders, fifth graders. Third graders, sorry. So wonderful opportunity for an organization that has a goal in mind about helping to educate kids. Our Qantas Club members brought in, they do that every year. You can see the smiles on the kids' faces, hearing kids say, I've never owned a dictionary before. Them teaching them to look back in the index and find out about all the facts about our government and our, you know, things that they can learn about in the back of those dictionaries. So that was a wonderful partnership we just completed. Events like our dinner at Lincoln. Some of the smaller schools have had dinners in their buildings traditionally, some have not. And the bigger schools, it's much more of a challenge to have a five-hundred-person dinner at Besser than it is to have maybe a hundred-and-twenty-person dinner at Lincoln. But we were really excited. Lincoln's got a great pack going right now, and they had their first of what we hope is an annual dinner just the other night. Brought their families in, made them feel comfortable at school, gave them the opportunity to just like being in their kid's school, and that's a very important thing. Things like FFA, these wonderful opportunities that exist in this district for kids to get out of Alpena, go out into the world, compete, learn, and find out about what's out there. Our kids, a lot of them are very geographically isolated. Again, and these organizations that bring them out of our community, out into the big world to see what's available to them are really important. This is our, Romeo, what's the group called, your SLS? Yeah, so Students Leading Students. It's a community partnership. It's an opportunity for kids to advocate what their needs are, as well as provide leadership to fellow students. And so the advocacy is both for families and for students to learn how to self-advocate. And then, of course, we've got some wonderful groups like Early College Leadership, honor societies that do volunteering in our community in addition to our families that come in and support us both financially and with their time, which we very much appreciate. This one, I just wanted to kinda pull together some of the things that we try and highlight with our families. Wonderful partnership with our law enforcement. When we realized that if they came in to eat, our families wouldn't panic when they saw a police car in front of one of our buildings, that our kids would be used to officers in uniform and feel comfortable with them, hopefully have the opportunity to, in the future, if they needed to interact, make it be a positive interaction. Letting families know about calendar issues. This, this awesome, our United Way Partnership brings Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. Again, it's an academic undertaking, opportunity for kids to get books and to read. Bob Thompson's working on this brick build, and despite the Starbase closure, they're still working with NOAA. If NOAA's available, are still open this weekend, they're working with NOAA in order to bring that partnership. Our friends that did the ICE Fest this weekend, food resources from places in our community. These are, those things that we talk about, learning away from school, these are important elements, and we have to, we have to share those out with our families. The more families are aware of what's available, they have the opportunity to make decisions on what's best for them, what needs they have, what things our community can offer to families that, that have particular needs. So again, the ultimate goal, building, strengthening a trusting relationship with our families and our partners. Go ahead, Matt. Okay, I'm, just a moment, I'm gonna hand this over to Romeo. But this is, our overarching goal is community partnerships that support education, safety, and wellness of our kids. As we asked our principals what partnerships they have in their schools, this is about one page of six pages of part, active partnerships, support in our, in our community that brings resources in those three areas, education, safety, and wellness to our kids. And if our kids are well, our kids are safe, and our kids have opportunities to learn, then, then we can do our job during the day in our thirty-five hours.
So focused on the high school, just to say, Lee, they put us together because they wanted us both to come out of our shell a little bit.
We're gonna, we're gonna, before you go on.
But anyhow, AJ, I'd like to have you change, you're going to thirty minutes, please, AJ. Thirty minutes, I thought AJ was giving me thirty. I'm kidding. No, I don't need five, I'll be fast.
Well, you got two minutes.
I'll, well, I'll take five, I'll go five. So just to piggyback off of Lee, part of the pieces that we look at at the high school from the education, safety, and wellness, starting with safety, we have to begin with our SRO. Our SRO has been in place here for many years, starting with Chet Spencer, who's actually our director for Up North Prevention, which is another partnership we have. Our school resource officer, basically I call him my cop, he's our copper. But he, his main goal is to be in there to remove that stigma with these students. So he's in the, in the hallways with the kids. The goal for him is to have an open door policy when kids are coming to his office, and that happens every day. They're seeking him out, he, he's a resource for students, and that's a big thing. I asked him, what, what do you, what, what is your number one goal? Counselor, mentor, and to create and embody some type of relationships with kids. He believes in it. I come all the way back from our SROs that we've had throughout, and they've changed. Jason, fortunately for us, so we have to look at what APD partnerships with us on, is giving us an individual that's gonna come in and remove that stigma, because I think that's probably the most important. Many of these kids have, have an opportunity to work with law enforcement in a negative manner. This is a positive manner that helps to break that, that, that stigma that's been around for a long time. He's working with Jason Kunith, who is our, our trooper liaison, and they came in and actually presented at our collaboration the other day. They've offered to go into classrooms while, while teachers might have a sub, or they're out for three days because they're sick, and, and they want these guys to come in and talk on anything. They will use that time, build lessons, and come in and talk on topics that the teachers want. Not just government, not just law, but anything. And they're willing to go in, and, and they presented that to staff, and it was overwhelmingly a positive piece for them, so we're excited for them. They're trying to bring back Dare, which is called TEAM, which is teaching, educating, and mentoring, and it's an offshoot of that, so they've all been trained, along with Terry Curtis at the elementary, and so they're, they're attempting to make that, that break and bring them in. But our SROs are really, probably one of our important part of our team at the high school, especially for us, when it comes to safety. You look around here and just look at the doors. Eighty-one, there's eighty-one doors. And when we started talking about closed campus and shutting things down, it was difficult to, to do this, and, and that brings us up to the bond work they're gonna do, and it's gonna create a whole new vestibule here. It's gonna create great signage, which is gonna help for school safety and get people to the right location. This place is mammoth, are you at the front or the back? Nobody knows. Visitors come to one area, others come here, the signage is gonna help, and it's gonna help because our SRO will be out there. It'll be easy to come into the building, and it's just gonna be a great addition to the high school, something I'm excited about. I'm excited to see what it's gonna look like for students and, and our, and our visitors. Uh, I'm excited to see what it's gonna look like for students and, and our, and our visitors, and just create a real atmosphere that I believe that our partnership with APD presents. Uh, they're wonderful teammates. Uh, as far as education partnerships, a piece here is, there's so much to talk about, I can't hit everything. So I tried to highlight the big ones. ACC's a huge partner for us. We talk about them with the enrollment, early college, direct credit options. All those pieces are pivotal. Robotics is another one that we partner with. Community partner and liaisons who come in here and volunteer. Uh, you, you heard, uh, wh- what was read by Eric Lawson for donations, just for robotics. It costs that much. The commitment by individuals to come in and work with our students one-on-one is truly a partnership that is outstanding. ROV's another one that does the same. They're partnering with NOAA, they're partnering with community leaders and community mentors to make sure that they're, that they're doing their part. Gear Up, uh, this is an, uh, a program through the University of Michigan Dearborn. Uh, we have a partnership with them that's extraordinary. Today, uh, they brought in exam experts for four sessions with our, with our juniors to prep them for the SAT. Uh, they're doing college visits, college advising, uh, inspiring the Plus One programs, looking at all the individual counseling that goes with it with FAFSA. And then last but not least, our Advised Michigan Coordinator, who has partnered with, with MCAN, uh, is here tonight, Melissa Smith is everywhere. We just did a, we did a program on Monday and Tuesday, uh, bringing, bringing parent, parents and kids in about FAFSA, Plus One information from 7:30 in the morning till 8:30, trying to get them in to access it, being at ACC to do FAFSA opportunities. Uh, looking at what, what this, the new free college for our students looks like and how that's gonna be impacted by, by our group. These folks are wonderful assets that we, he's pushing me to the next page, uh, that are just extraordinary for all of us. And then lastly, the wellness piece is probably near and dear to my heart as a counselor. Uh, looking at what we have to offer with NEMSCA. NEMSCA's been a partnership forever at the elementaries. When we brought ba, brought in our school success here, there's an extraordinary opportunity to offer more opportunities at one-on-one help with, with smaller caseloads of students. We've added a behavior tech that helps in our restorative center, which is extraordinary. Uh, i- it's helping keep kids in school, that's our goal. Uh, that's the wellness that we're trying to provide is, is, is mini treatment for those kids in those segments. Uh, Lee mentioned SLS in that picture. That is another partnership with Up North Prevention. Uh, that program is out of that. Their mission's to, to provide safe environments for kids. And they're, they're enhancing opportunities by doing that. And lastly, our Alcona Health Center, years and years ago, we added a, a therapist here to create less barriers for our students to get mental health help with clinicians beyond our counseling staff. Uh, since then, we've added additional counselor, uh, that was a one-on-one piece. And now, we're lucky enough to have added the, the Alcona, or the Alpena Health Center, which, which has a PA, nurses, and, and I say I have a punch card there, it's true. I do frequent, uh, and I get in quick. Uh, but it's great for our students and staff because it's easy access, no barriers, and, and it really is a great addition to our school, and it's starting to be used more and more. But those wellness pieces are so important, not only from the mental health, but our physical and emotional well-being is so important for all, not only students, but our staff as well. So, we have tons and tons to offer in those three areas. Excited about what it offers within the district, and I'm right on, buddy.
Thank you, Romeo. Uh, questions?
All right, let's talk at our tables.
Thank you. So five minutes to discuss at your tables? About three minutes.
Oh, come on, you're gonna do great. I'm gonna set it up so badly you can't help but look good. Set a big turd sign.
Just about one minute, and we'll move on to our final goal area of the night. All right. We are ready to go on to our final goal area of the night. So if you could wrap up your conversations. So stewardship. When we look at stewardship, it is being good stewards, taking care of the resources that have been given to the district. Um, this is actually in our vision statement, uh, that the board added, um, to, again, take care of the resources that we are given in order to run our school district. There are, uh, some key trends to be aware of, and many in the room know these because you've lived through them, uh, so you know them better than I. 1972 was our highest year of enrollment in the district, and I believe it was 9,280 students. Since then, we've been declining enrollment to, uh, I should've had this number, 3,640? 3,606 in our latest count. So from 9,280 down to 3,600. In that period of time, we've closed 10 buildings that have not been repurposed in the district. I think we've closed an additional three that we have repurposed at some point. Um, but our enrollment projections show that most likely, three, five years from now, we will have less students than we have today. And so that is something that, um, you, again, you live through some of those closures that, you know, it sounds like they were made last minute or with not a lot of notice. We wanna be proactive and look forward and say, we are pretty confident that at some point, we're gonna have to restructure the district in some way, shape, or form. So let's start talking about it now as part of this strategic plan. So you'll hear long-term plans for, uh, physical, uh, um, infrastructure, and then instructional infrastructure is the curriculum and then the changing needs of the students and all of that. Staffing as well is something we need to start looking out and projecting as best as we can. Again, if we are, uh, you know, down from 9,000 students, obviously we can't maintain the same amount of staffing. And we have this interesting, uh, conundrum where we can't find enough staff, but we know that if we wait long enough, it'll probably match up as we continue to go down. But that's not good planning. We wanna, you know, be having those conversations. And then our geography. I have to share, when I was down in my previous district, and I lived in my entire life in metro Detroit, and I went to conferences and I heard those up north rural superintendents talk about the challenges of transportation. I said, "Yeah, I get it, it's not that big a deal, you got a lot of miles you gotta cover." Holy cow, was I naive. Because our geography, just the busing alone is complex. And again, you're busing fewer and fewer students, spread out further, you know, not further, but they're more spread out because there's fewer of them. It impacts absolutely everything we do, what we can offer, what we can't offer. Uh, if I could go back and kick old Dave in the butt, I would do it and say, "Wake up." But that is a significant thing that we need to address. We have staff that travel between our elementaries. Um, because of that, uh, well, actually, multiple buildings. But because they aren't devoted to one building during the day, that severely impacts our scheduling abilities for programs, and we need to look at that. Um, and then finally, uh, not stealing your thunder, but what are our wants in the district? Um, what are our needs? And how about sustainability? What can we do between the wants and the needs to make sure that we can continue to offer an outstanding educational product? And with that-
So the long-term sustainable plan for instructional infrastructure includes technology and, um, looking at instructional needs, which it requires cooperation of the curriculum department in my department. Um, the business office touches every corner of this district, you know, in, in multiple ways. Um, so we have to be aware of what is being planned as far as new curriculum, um, what grants are out there to apply for and things like that. So we need to, I need to understand the whole big picture. Um, the long-term plan for facility infrastructures, as you know, and I'm so very grateful for the bond that was passed a few years ago. But that bond included a lot of other things that were on the agenda, but we had to scale down the bond in order to get it passed. So, in light of that, we do have a list that we have maintained over the years of district needs for infrastructure that we need to improve, like, um, replacing windows or flooring that has not been replaced yet due to, from the bond, or new lockers that need to go in, you know, things like that. So we have a complete list, and it's dated out for at least 20 years because we also include the warranties for the new boilers and new roofs and things like that that were replaced, so that we can keep an eye on, you know, when those things might start wearing out. And I will tell you, I have to put a plug in for our maintenance group because they do a great job, they really do. The boiler system at LO8 was over 50 years old and it was still running. You know, and they were scrapping together pieces to keep it running. Um, it's now brand-new, but just to give you an idea, um, we do have long-range technology plan also that includes our cyclical replacements of Chromebooks and technology across the district. There's plans to put in, um, interactive boards in the elementary schools and all of the classrooms. And it includes replacing, um, staffing, computers for the staff also. So all of those have to be done in a cycle, so that we're not hit with a big bill all at once for everything across the district. So we plan those out and separate the years. Um, same thing with the physical infrastructure too. Those things are all planned out so that we know where we need to be. In light of that, we also know that there are some wish lists things that we would really love to do, like, you know, uh, uh, the weight room, for one thing. I know that's a big wish on everybody's thing, but that takes a lot of planning. We have to do some research, figure out exactly how much it's gonna cost, where we would put it, or would we have to build add-on to, in order to put something like that in place. So there's a lot of secure, uh, security needs also. Um, Romeo had mentioned the secure vestibule that's going at the high school. All of the elementary schools in Thunder Bay now have a secure vestibule, so they're all set. We have, um, bus replacement cycle that we work on. We try to do at least one or two buses a year to kinda keep things going. We, uh, we're working on replacing furniture across the district right now. Uh, last year, we set aside 150,000. This year, we set us, another 150,000 aside in addition to the 95,000 that was just donated from APSC. So that is, um, we're replacing student-centered furniture, so the classroom furniture for the kids. Because our furniture's wearing out, hasn't been replaced in a lot of years. Um, there's a lot of things that weren't done around the district due to deficit, and just trying to keep those things going and get us caught up to where we really need to be because the infrastructure of the buildings affects the students' learning. If you have a dingy, dark, dirty classroom, you're, it's not such a great place to learn. Nice sunlight, new, the new lightings with the LED is all, it's great to see the bond work that was done in the classroom, so, I don't know, where'd Dave go?
Great job, great job. And I think, you know, one of the things that AJ mentioned a few minutes ago that I just wanna highlight because, um, he went to the school, I went to the school, and this school, despite being built in the 60s where I don't think they were really thinking about what it was gonna look like today, and what learning was gonna look like today. As you look around this building with the extension of G-Wing, with B-Wing, with this room alone, where at one point in time, we couldn't be doing this because you have to be quiet in here. But now, learning is transforming, it's been adapted. Um, this, this union that we have here is such a great place for, for learning. And it, it came to be because of a vision with that long-term planning, and also with partnerships, grants, trying to get things going. When you look at B-Wing, all the things that are down there with the, you know, we think about why is building trades on campus and not down at Wildcat Court? Well, that beautiful construction tech building out there is, is keeping things safe, is keeping our tools to be in pristine order, so that way their, their life is gonna be extended. And so those things are not facing the elements. The enrollment that we have in those programs is gonna be, um, safe and that those programs will be offered because kids are gonna be comfortable working. And because of these opportunities, the partnerships that are existing beyond, uh, just APS students, but with Atlanta, Alcona, Hillman, those students are coming here. We're getting to have them be part of our program, so that way, again, our countywide i- i- skillset is growing. So all that takes a vision that is difficult to do- So all that takes a vision that is difficult to do when you have a moving target in terms of what your budget's going to be. I know Mary just went through an audit a couple weeks ago. That is always difficult when you think about the proposed budget from the governor of what you get to plan with for a little bit, if it gets passed, with when that money comes to the school district, with the reimbursements that are occurring. It is a near impossible job to do it successfully. So when you think about all the things that we wish we had, it's really exciting to see what we do have. And it's really exciting to see the bond work wrap up this year. I know there's some teachers that are excited to have whiteboards in every classroom with that and get to a spot where we're not using chalkboards anymore. And those things, you know, when you think about your personal budget, it is really nice to say, "I need to go to Meyer right now because I forgot to budget for this, and I can go buy it right now." And as much as I wish that was the case for us at the school, it's not, and Mary does a good job of keeping us to that and saying, "What's our plan? Stick to the plan." Because again, it's about being stewards of our taxpayer base and making sure that we are able to provide a learning environment like we have here tonight with B-Wing, with updating our classes, with all the different opportunities kids have. So it's just dedication and, again, sticking with it.
So you'll have to forgive me because I am truly a numbers person. I am not a public speaker.
All right, thank you both. So take a few minutes, five minutes, to discuss at your board or at your table, and then we are on track, ladies and gentlemen, because we didn't start right at 6:00. It was a few minutes after. Just about three minutes. Just about one minute. All right, if you would, wrap up your conversations. Before we leave stewardship, I did want to just go back to the photo that's on this slide here, just so you can see that we've started to take all of what we think are the initiatives that we might be implementing, that we want to, that we need to, and then also those that we are currently implementing. The pink cards along the top are the years, and it's starting with this year, next year, and so forth. And then the green cards are the goal areas from the strategic plan. So we're trying to lay these initiatives, strategies, whatever they might be, out over the next three to five years. And then, you know, just putting that out there gives you a real good sense of, we're about to do something that has a half-million-dollar price tag. Did we compare that to everything else that we're doing that year? What kind of impact would that have financially or overburdening our staff with PD and all that's associated there? So this is, we call it the war room, well, I call it the reward room. I don't know if any of my administrative team agrees with me. But the idea is we are mapping this out. That will then become our long-term plan with the caveat of, we know every year, we are at the mercy of the state of Michigan to decide how much money to give us. And those plans can change very quickly. We saw probably the worst public education budget last year, and this year is, eh, we're looking promising, but there's a lot of moving of funds around so that when they say $10,000 a student, doesn't that sound wonderful? But there's these backend costs that they were supporting last year, and they're not supporting this year. And so we need to be conscientious of that. But anyway, again, we are working towards having that long-term plan to the best of our ability to help make us prioritize decisions and things like that. So you have heard quite a bit tonight. I appreciate your patience and really, I'm going to do my thank yous right now, and just want to put out a blanket thank you because there's so many people from so many different aspects here. I am absolutely certain I will forget someone, and I don't want to do that. So again, for those of you that are here for the first time, thank you so much for coming. It's wonderful. We are growing that audience of the strategic plan. And of course, for those of you that were here last year, thank you so much for coming again. It's really important that you see we are continuing this plan and continuing to make steps moving our direction forward in the way we said we were going to. So, next steps. Again, we started with the yellow means that we're in the design, assess, and plan phase. And then what do we need to get to that green phase where we're launching the plan? So you've heard mostly, pretty much everything today was in that define and assess. We were taking a look at everything we're doing. We're assessing how well we do something, or do we do it all, or those kind of things, so that we know what the current reality of the district is so that we can move into this phase of deliver. And so in order to go green, go to the deliver phase, we have to have a plan. We designed, we assessed, and then we need to plan as part of the yellow. And when we get to the implement or deliver phase, that has four steps to it too. So again, this is small. It's just an introduction. We started talking to our administrative team about this. Each of the yellow areas in the strategic plan will have essentially this document. The idea behind this is it's a one-to-two-page document that gives the average citizen, person, staff member, whoever, an idea of all these different components that make up that particular area, how we're going to measure it, and all of those pieces. This is the document that will then inform our plan, the green phase. So quickly going over, you have the goal, deliver high-quality instruction to maximize student achievement. The strategy is deliver, design and deliver an effective instructional model. We will identify the data that we will use to track that area. We will provide an academic challenge statement, something data-based as to why we are doing whatever it is we are doing. We will then identify what the activity is, so in this case, it's teacher clarity. We will identify the outcome of the system. And so there'll be two parts to these things. If we need a system up and running and full functioning, like having fully staffed and fully trained staff, that's a process in itself. So we'll design that what we want it to look like when it's all set and up and running 100%. At the same time, we'll provide a system challenge statement that says, we currently have 40% of our staff that, you know, are lacking this training, whatever it might be. That then becomes a goal that we need to work on, and we can track monitoring our progress on it. Then adult expectations and outcomes. When this system is running, up and running, what are the adults doing? What do we expect them to do? And then, of course, the student expectation. Anything we're doing, what impact do we expect it to have on students? But also, what do we expect the students to be doing when that system's up and running? And then, of course, the data collection and then analysis. What data will be used? Who will be responsible for collecting and analyzing the data? When will the data be collected and analyzed? When will the results and data-based action steps be reported? And who will receive these reports? Once we've got that defined, we'll be in the green phase to implement that plan. So again, for the most part, we're taking this year to define, assess, and plan, and then in the fall, we launch the plan when everything goes green. Some of those other areas there, we expect to be able to launch those plans sooner, second semester, May or a couple of those dates. But that's it. So that's the next set of work to do to now that we've put everything on the table, basically, and we've had conversations about how it fits into each of these goal areas. Now what do the actual plan and measurables look like going forward? And so, we don't have a space for you to do this, but if you want to, just take a couple of minutes. And is there space on your wows and wonderings to do some wows and wonderings about the next steps? Is there enough space there? Or you can just do it? If you could, bring your conversations to a close. All right. So again, thank you so much for your time and energy and being a part of this conversation. On your desk, your tables, you have a group wows and wonderings. If you'd leave that there. And then if you want to leave your own individual one, you can as well. We certainly appreciate your feedback there. And then we will be debriefing as an admin team, and we'll debrief with the board as well on all of this. I am a big believer, and if you tell the same joke multiple times, eventually, it will be funny. So for those of you that were here last year, this video has gone viral. It's been viewed by almost 60 people already. See? I told that joke last year. So was it funnier this year than last year, or is it just move on? I, thank you all so much. You know, so many people had so much to do with getting this ready. I couldn't have done it myself. Thanks to everyone for coming. And then we do have to officially close this meeting, so I'll turn it over to Anna.
One last chance for citizens or delegations to address the board. Okay? Advanced planning, is there on your agenda? And with that, thank you everyone for coming. This is always so refreshing and a nice way to see community members and staff, and I feel like we should do this more often. Maybe not in this big capacity, but it's just nice to hear from other people and not just have it be the same group of people month in and month out. So thank you so much, and with that, we will adjourn.